This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order and the chair calls on City Clerk, Ivan Nelson, for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Councilman Williams is in the building to join us shortly. Councilman Avery?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present. Our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Harris to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your kindness and your mercy and your blessings that you have bestowed upon us. As we go through these proceedings today, we ask you to be with us, lead us and guide us. Let us make those decisions that are pleasant and pleasing to you as we process, as we go through the process. Be with us, be with our council, be with our mayor, be with the City of Gadsden, be with our leaders and be with our soldiers who are in harm's way. Protect them, lead them and guide them. Let them know that you are the way. And as we proceed, let us show, let us show love for each other as we move through the process. In the blessings we ask in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Community Development and Finance Committee meetings, as well as the work session and the city council meeting on March 25th.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair, entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of March 21st through 27th.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Talk some motions. Unfinished business, we have none today. New business, is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have three items that I would ask for unanimous consent to consider individually today. The first being a resolution authorizing agreement with CDG Engineers and Associates for Engineering Design. Let's have unanimous consent to consider.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Moved to adopt.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is part of the engineering study that we have. Our portion of it is $10,147 for engineering study for, as required for resurfacing of Peyton Rich Avenue, Ninth Street and Forest Avenue. So we want to get this project going, so that's it.
I think last week we passed the resurfacing of it.
Yes, we did last week. This is engineering.
And because it's an MPO project, the state requires that we do all of this. But as I said previously, it's just to pay off a few, I mean, it's just to make sure that everything is done above board.
Okay, any other? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mayor, you want to?
I got a proclamation and Ms. Tracy Prandick and Craig Scott, if y'all will come up, please. For as service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs. RSVP volunteers address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and nation from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families to preserve the environment and helping communities recover from natural disasters. National service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills and leadership abilities for those who serve. In one year, 350 RSVP volunteers served 47,000 hours in more than 50 agencies and organizations, bolstering the civic, neighborhood and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. National service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve, both through their direct service and by recruiting and managing millions of additional volunteers. National service presents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. RSVP volunteers demonstrate commitment, dedication and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains to them, with them in their future endeavors. The Corporation of National and Community Services shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives and strengthen communities, and is joining with the mayors across the country to support the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 1st, 2014. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Shore and Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, do hereby proclaim April 1st, 2014, is National Service Recognition Day and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city and to thank those who serve and find ways to give back to their communities. [applause]
I don't blame you, Tracy, I wouldn't want to be with him either.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item that I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today is a resolution authorizing agreement with Bill Avery to perform a Smoke on the Falls.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Moved to adopt.
Second. Any discussion?
Well, Mr. President, this is, this is in order, this is an agreement with the city for Bill Avery to perform a Smoke on the Falls, which will be April 12th, 2014. In addition to Bill Avery being there to perform, I also understand that we have one of the city councils that's going to be up there smoking meat up at the Falls too, so I'm going to encourage everybody to come up and join us at the Smoke on the Falls.
Okay, any other?
Hot dogs?
Barbecue.
I'm doing, I'm doing chicken that day.
Oh.
I have you to know, we done graduated from hot dogs.
Oh, okay.
I thought we were doing ribs, Johnny.
All ever known was hot dogs. I just thought he was going to barbecue some of those.
I'll take them.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And the third item I have, Mr. President, is that I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today is a resolution authorizing agreement with Indigent Defense Services with Dana Willoughby.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Moved to adopt.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I'm going to let, calling our city attorney to explain this resolution to us.
Actually, this is going to be with the law firm of Dana Willoughby and also Patricia Granger. They'll be providing for the city Indigent Defense Council and, and this just secures, make sure that we'll have adequate representation in city court. And out of the, and they'll be paid out of the funds that we collect on our court costs and it's designated as a fair trial tax, so it should not cost the city any money.
Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, explain that tax. What happens if we don't use that money?
This is someone's pet peeve, I think.
It is?
The fair trial, when, when city court, when someone pays their traffic ticket, for example, they pay court costs and a fine. And the court cost is earmarked several different ways to Sunday, most of the money going to the state for different various reasons. One of the earmarks on the court cost is, goes to what's called the Fair Trial Tax Fund, and that is collected by the local magistrate. And, and that fund is used to defray costs for providing indigent defense counsel. And any money that is not expended out of that fund at the end of the month is due to be remitted to the state. So, but the way we're arranging the contracts with these lawyers here today is from this point forward, all amounts collected in the fair trial tax will be split evenly between the two lawyers. So from henceforth, there'll be no money remitting to the state. Also, you've got to also understand, under the old, old fee schedule, which we've been using in the city court, there may be some months where actually the cost of providing indigent fee counsel exceeded what we collected in the fair trial tax. So it's kind of a give and take. This makes it set, so we know that we're not going to have to be paying out of our pocket for indigent defense. And also, if providing the defense counsel for indigent do not exceed their fair trial tax, we will not be remitting anything to the state.
Thank you, sir. That's one of those no taxes that they were going to pass down there that they tack to a fee to get for in the state, that we won't be sending back to them. I appreciate your work on that.
Okay, is there any other?
Yes, Mr. Clerk, will you take?
We have the vote.
Take the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one item. It's a resolution authorizing approval of the Community Development Block Grant Budget for fiscal year 2014. I'd like to ask if we can consider that today.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous vote for consent.
Moved for passage.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, as the, as the resolution title indicates, this is our annual CDBG budget, program budget for fiscal year 2014. Fiscal year, for, for those of us who, who may have lost sight of that, the fiscal year runs from June 1 of this year to May 31st of 2015. And the vast majority of the monies that are designated in this budget are targeted for low to moderate income areas. So again, this is, this is one of the reasons why we fight so diligently for the Community Development Block Grant Programs across the country, because this is used to augment many of our, our huge projects. You know, so again, in light of the fact that we don't have a transportation budget and transportation spending is, is a nuisance in this current environment, these, these block grants are instrumental in helping us to carry out some of these projects.
This is one of the line items in Congress that's always under attack. As a matter of fact, one chamber will always zero it out and then the other chamber will put it back in. So it's, it's important that we talk to our congressional people about how important Community Development Block Grant Funds are to this community and to communities all over the country. Right now, we getting less than a million dollars. I think it's right at $900,000. And at one time, we were getting a million point five, I think was the highest amount that we received. And over the years, they've continued to cut, cut, cut. So we, we need to talk to our elected officials about restoring that particular line item in the federal budget, because it goes a lot of, goes into a lot of different pots locally in order to help us move our city forward. So hopefully, we can get some, some new folks up there who understand that.
Anything else? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Mr. President, I have one item, a resolution authorizing lease agreement with Scales PR Marketing LLC for the Kmart parking lot use. I'd ask for unanimous consent.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'd ask for passage.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, this is leased with a company that's going to be using the Kmart parking lot for amusement rides and stuff. They did have a date, we found out that date pretty much conflicted, so we're going to leave the date open and they're going to get back with the mayor to negotiate another date on this.
Any other? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a resolution I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider this morning. It's a resolution agreement with Jones, Blair, Walter and Tucker Incorporated for Engineering Design Services required for the widening and resurfacing of South 11th Street from Black Creek Parkway to Piedmont Avenue.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Now I'll ask for passage, please.
Second. Is there any discussion?
This is a project, this is an MPO project. It's $102,000. The city's part of it, it's about $20,000. This is widening of the South 11th Street, right in front of the high school, really, from Black Creek Parkway down to Piedmont, which runs the length of the high school property. So we're looking forward to this.
We're also looking forward to one day widening South 11th Street. Did they promise they were going to do that when they put the school down there?
They talked favorably about it, but a little short of money.
I remember there was any promise.
We're going to do it right after we do extend 759.
Second day with the 759. About how much the school costs, much less four ladies in South 11th Street.
If I remember correctly, and you know, I don't have the best money.
There was talk about it, yes.
I don't have the best money.
It would have been ideal if we could have done it.
I just said that that was part of the deal, from what I understand, when I remembered that we were going to do that.
You have a, you have a memory that is so dead blam good, the rest of us are too old to remember. You're so young, man, that you remember everything.
Yeah, selective memory, I think.
I remember that one too, though.
We're getting off a beaten path here. We're going to widen South 11th Street and also we've got a project going to replace the bridge down there, which is, which is going to be a big project coming up later.
That was, that was part of the deal, to replace the bridge, widen it, take out the curb.
Then they found out they had a pipe down there that was made.
As long as there nobody stayed at the Lakenta last night, I'm the 800 pound gorilla here, and I don't know what's going on.
We're going to vote on what's going to happen.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, is there any other new business? You mean, that's all of it?
Mr. President, I have one.
Oh.
I would like to congratulate you and mostly Betty on your 65th wedding anniversary tomorrow. Is that right?
That's right.
65 years. All right.
We got married on the day after April Fools.
Woo. She was fooled, is that it? No, she wasn't.
That's right.
65 years, that's great, Bob. Yeah, that is great.
That sounds like a long time, doesn't it? It sure has passed in a hurry.
Like yesterday, huh?
Yeah. Okay. Department reports, committees, boards, are there any?
Yeah. Parks and Rec.
He beat you to it, Kay.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just going to give you an update on a couple of events. The Parks and Rec's getting ready to get wide open, but I want to go back and tell you about an event we had a few weeks ago, in case some of you didn't hear. We had the state youth basketball tournament here in town two weeks ago. We had 107 teams from all over the state played this event, starting Friday at 5:00 and finished it up Sunday about 5:00. And we played in eight facilities, five of our facilities, as well as Gadsden City, Couso Christian and Attawal. And I just want to thank our, our police department this year helped out and sent officers to each site, and we had no problems at all, which is amazing. We've been doing this for quite a number of years and everything just went smooth, no incidents. And I want to thank them for their presence. I think that had a lot to, to do with the success of the, of the tournament. I think we had one, this was boys and girls, eight and under up to 18 and under, and I think we had one boys team that finished runner-up here locally. And I'd like to try to get them maybe to come to the council. I think they, that was a pretty good accomplishment for them, and maybe we can get them to come here in a few weeks to be recognized. On the things we have coming up, I got to looking at our calendar when we put it together and we had it finalized and printed in January of this year, and I think this is the busiest Parks and Rec calendar that I've seen in my seven years. We've got just three or four weekends between now and the middle of July that we don't have something going on that we're either assisting with, sponsoring, or putting on ourself. So we're going to be very busy, so you'll probably see me up here quite a bit in the next couple of months promoting our activities. But we got two coming up. This weekend, we got the Alabama Bass Trail, which is a new trail that was started two years ago, last year actually, by the governor with, with his assistance. He's putting in $5,000 for each leg of the tournament, and then the cities that are hosting these legs, I think there's six of them, are putting in $5,000. And that filled up pretty much immediately. They have a waiting list. We have 200 boats coming this Saturday to fish at Couso Landing, which will be the most boats that we've had since Couso Landing has been open. It'll be the, the most that we've had. And then later in May, we're going to have one that's going to outdo it, and I'll tell you about it as we get closer to it. But anyway, we'll have 200 boats. They'll be meeting at Convention Hall Friday night for their little pre-meeting. I think the mayor's going to come and welcome them around 6:00, and then they'll get up and fish, blast off at safe daylight between 6:00 and 7:00. Their way in will be at Couso Landing at 2:45. And we are parking some boats and trailers over in our Kmart parking lot for that tournament, just because we don't have the, that many parking spaces at Couso Landing. The other thing too, this, this Thursday, I'll go ahead and mention too, the, the citywide track meets at Gadsden City starts at 9:00 Thursday morning, then on Friday at 9:00, we have our Special Olympic Track Meet. Our staff, they help with both of those events, so you'll see our people assisting with the Gadsden City School System and some other organizations to, to operate that event. Then the event that's coming up in two weeks is our Smoke on the Falls. I can't believe it's our 60th year to do this. I think we started with 28 teams the first year. This year's the most that we've ever had registered, and we've cut it off. We have 80 teams.
Wow.
And we've actually, last year we had 71, and we outgrew the area that we started this in, which y'all well know is in front of the entrance to Nocolo Falls. So we've shifted it to the campground. So this year's going to be the first year that's been at the campground. And, but listen, let me tell you a little bit about what kind of activities that you get if you want to come up and pay to come in. Friday night's free. You can come up and mingle with Johnny, and he told me that he wasn't cooking hot dogs, that he was cooking fried potted meat. And he said that everyone was welcome to eat it, so there you go. But anyway, you can come up Friday night and mingle with the cookers. In the past, we've done entertainment on Friday night. This year, there's no entertainment at all on Friday night. Everything's on Saturday. And I'll tell you a little bit about who's performing here in just a minute, but you can come up on Friday night, not pay anything, stay as long as you want, and then leave and then come back Saturday. It's $10 to get in on Saturday when we have entertainment. We're going to have a true adventure is bringing a zip line and putting up in the campground area, and that'll be an additional charge, but you can come and ride the zip line. It'll be there Friday night and all day Saturday. And come try it out. It'll probably be about a 15-minute zip line course that you can do, and they'll give us a portion of the proceeds that they collect for the people that ride it. I think it's going to be a $10 or $15 charge to do the zip line. But that's something new that we have not had before. The, let me tell you a little bit about our sponsors too. Gadsden Regional is going to be sponsoring our Smoke Your Buns 5K Run this year. We do it Saturday morning at 8:00 at the campground stage, start it right there, and our entertainment will be on that stage as well. In the past, we've had to build a stage or purchase a stage, construct one. We won't have to do that at the campground. But our gates will open at 11:00 on Saturday. The run, we'll do the award ceremony right before the gates open, and then Jack's Hamburgers is sponsoring our kids area. There'll be inflatables, plenty of things for the kids to do. That area will be open from 11:00 to 5:00. And then on our State Farm Music Stage, of course, State Farm is the sponsor of it, we've got a couple local entertainers that will kick off that morning around 11:15, and then at 3:00, the Bill Avery Band will be on stage for one hour, 3:00 to 4:00, leading up to the award ceremony for the barbecue. In the past, when the award ceremony was over, we was done. This year, there's two more acts coming on stage after the award ceremony. We've got a group coming on at 5:00 called Haley and Alexis Band. I think it's two twin girls that's graduated from Auburn, that's about all I know about them. And the John King Band will perform at 7:00. So you can actually, for the price of your admission, the $10 for adults, you get in, you get a free barbecue, just like you always have, you get to go play a free round of mini-golf, you get in the entrance to the Falls, and you get into the barbecue and to get to hear the entertainment, which is a great deal. Then our Johnson's Giant Foods is our VIP sponsors. For y'all that come out, you can enjoy our VIP area. And of course, some of our other big sponsors, Coca-Cola, Academy Sports. It takes quite a bit of sponsors to be able to put this type of event on, but I just, and we give out $10,000 in cash and prizes to the barbecue teams. So it's, it's going to be a fun-filled weekend. The weather's cooperated with us every year, and we don't anticipate it to be any different this year. And Janet and her staff have done a wonderful job on getting this event to where it's at right now. It's a, it's a very successful event. We have people calling us every year during the year wanting to know when it is, just because they've enjoyed the way they get treated when they come. Even the judges, I think we have to have like 40 Kansas City barbecue sanctioned judges, and we end up having about 100 wanting to come. So we have to, we have to cut it back as well. Of course, they come and stay in our hotels and all as well, and they don't get paid for doing that. But anyway, you, you can see that we got a real busy time coming up, and we look forward to seeing all of you out. Thanks.
Carrie, I'm glad that you talked about those 100 judges that were coming, and before you hadn't had that many, and everybody found out we was cooking this, Smoke on the Falls, we was cooking this time, that's why they all came.
I want to say something for Kay Talks about potted meat. You're not old enough to know much about that, Carrie, but you know, with the little mayonnaise, mustard, lettuce and tomato and pickles, it's a pretty good scent.
Goodness. I don't know, I don't know what to say after that. I'm Kay Moore, I'm director for Downtown Gadsden, and I appreciate the council, the mayor, y'all always letting me come up when we've got something going on too. Last month, we actually kicked off First Friday with our nonprofit, our Downtown Gadsden Gives Back. Before I tell you what's going to go on this month, this is what we, we deal with. People see First Friday as a very positive thing with, with a lot of people that attend, and we got a lot of different calls about people that want to come set up booths and, and tell about their organizations and raise money for this, that and the other. So three years, this is the third year, we've actually designated March as our Downtown Gadsden Gives Back, and we make that our nonprofit month. So any registered nonprofit gets to come and march and set up and, and play games and, and not necessarily raise money, but raise awareness of their groups. So that's, that's kind of what we've done. It's, there's a lot of calls. We do, we get people wanting to set up all the time, and they're great causes, but First Friday is about our downtown merchants, and that's where we want to focus with that. So that's why we did that. We also, you may have somebody that says, hey, can I come and set up a booth and, and sell jewelry? Or can I come and set up a booth and sell my crafts that I make? Again, we tell them, and we tell everybody the same thing. This, this is a downtown merchants event, so... This is a downtown merchants event, so no, we don't set up booths. The only thing that we do have on First Friday, excuse me, is the food vendors, because we don't have enough restaurants to feed all the people that come. So I just want to let you know, we do get a lot of calls, and we just have to say, you know, this is about our downtown merchants, and that's what it's supposed to be about. So if you ever do get a call and they tell you I've been ugly to them, I always try to be as nice as I can, but the answer is no, that we don't set up booths, and we don't set up, you know, fundraisers and things like that. We also say, you know, if, I know this is the election year, so for all y'all politicians out there listening, you can come and wear your T-shirts and meet and greet and shake hands, but please don't bring anything to hand out that's paper, because it ends up in the street. That makes it more difficult for our public works to clean up after it's over. So ink pens and cups or koozies, anything people hold on to, absolutely. But please, no pamphleteering, is what we call it. So that's just kind of what we're all about type thing. This year, we've got a couple of things, too, that we're asking people not to do. As First Friday has gotten bigger and bigger, we have more and more pets downtown, and some of these dogs that I've seen have been as big as small horses. I don't know if y'all have seen them out there, but it's a safety. It scares me, because people say, my dog would never hurt anybody, and they're not going to bite. But then you have these little tindy dogs, this big, that are going to run up and nip one of those dogs on the hill, and that dog is going to defend himself. So, you know, we're saying this year, we are actually posting signs this year, no pets allowed in the event area. So it's a safety issue. It's also a cleanliness issue. We've had several merchants complain because the pet owners don't necessarily clean up after their pets, and that ends up in the carpet in the stores. So there are two reasons for that. Also, skateboarding last year had gotten a little bit dangerous. People on skateboards are very, they move very quickly, and they're not always under control, so we're also asking no skateboarding in the event site this year. So that's a couple of new things that we've got going on. But we've got, we're hoping for weather to not do what they say, but we've got some great musicians, we've got some new people this year. We've got Rare Breed, it's going to be up in front of the Community Services in the 600 block. We have the TAD of Jazz, that's going to be in front of the Cultural Arts Center. Those are two new ones, they've never been at First Friday before. Then we've got BB&amp;T Alliance Quartet. This is a gospel group from Huntsville, and they, one of the guys is from here, they are a crowd favorite. So they were here last year, and they have come back this year. They come all the way from Huntsville just to play, and they've got, they draw a big crowd for us. South Ridge is also a new group, they're local, and then the Alabama Entertainers. South Ridge will be at Third and Broad. Alabama Entertainers will be in front of the Alpha Building. So that's the kids, and they're going to be, you know, they bring parents, and it's going to be a really good time. So that's our entertainment. Of course, we've got food vendors, we've got our restaurants downtown. We want you to come out and eat and have a good time. Our shops will be open late, lots of good sales, and you know, it's time to start looking for your Easter finery, so come on down and do that. The hours this time will be from 6:00 to 9:00. We'll close Broad Street about 4:30 from First to Seventh Streets, and we're just looking for a big old time this time. You know, if you've got questions, anybody out there, you can go on our Facebook page, Downtown Gadsden, DGI First Friday, I believe is the way it's listed, our website, downtowngadsden.com. We have to, you know, that's a great way to get information. The phone number at DGI is 256-547-8696. Getting all this out here, because it's really the first big one of the year. But just to find out information, any questions at all? I do a big thank you to our Gesen Police Department for our offices that are there. City of Gadsden Public Works, they do a tremendous job. You would never know at 10:00 Friday night that anything has gone on downtown. It is clean as a whistle, and it didn't be, it used to be that way when we got started, but then we've grown into something that we really do feel is a great event. The Sheriff's Department also has their deputy reserves out there that help, and we appreciate that. And then, of course, our sponsors. We are grateful for that, and you'll find those on our website, too. So we're looking forward to a great kickoff. Last summer, we had a lot of rain. You know, the weather report, I've decided they don't know really what's going to happen. We proceed up until we know we can't do it, so come on out Friday night and have a good time and enjoy yourself. It's fun, it's family-friendly, and it supports our downtown, and as long as we've got a good viable downtown, that helps our community. So that's what we're all about. We're all about working together, and I thank y'all for all your support, and if there's ever anything, any questions, please feel to call, yes.
Kay, I did have two things I wanted to ask. You said TAD of Jazz, is that this Friday?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so now, if you have, TAD of Jazz is a rather local jazz band. If you haven't heard them, you need to come out and hear them on Friday night.
That's right.
And the other thing, food vendors who are interested in being downtown on First Friday, there's a process they have to go through, and then would you just briefly touch on that for me, please? Because that seems to be the thing that we have the most questions about.
And that's true. We have, let me just say this, we have plenty of barbecue food vendors. If somebody wanted to sell something that was different from barbecue, we still have a couple of spaces available for that, but they do have to have a city business license, they do have to be approved by the Etowah County Health Department. There is a fee that they come, that they pay to come to First Friday. So if they will call us, we have an application form, and we tell them exactly what they need. They have to have us listed on their insurance as an additional insured, so if anything were to happen, you know, that they sold, they got hold of some bad food, but there is a process. You can't just come and set up, there is a process that you have to do. But we have plenty of barbecue. I would love to have something different, but we have plenty of barbecue vendors already, and that's the people that are calling. So if anybody hears this, y'all know of anybody that doesn't have barbecue that has something else, tell them to call us, we're looking for somebody.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, remarks by the mayor and the council? He hasn't left, so I don't guess he wants to start.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind everybody, summer's here, the hours are, got more sun out in daylight now coming out. Make sure you're, when you're going down the streets, you watch out for the children out playing, and I've seen a bunch out in the roads playing and riding their bicycle. Let's just be careful and be mindful of those kids out playing. Also, I want to remind everybody that it seems like that we've got a lot going here in Gadsden. Everybody says we don't have a lot, but we do. If you want to do something, most of our stuff is really cheap to do, you can just come out and enjoy yourself all over Gadsden. We've already heard today about a month worth of stuff that's going on this next month, so just come on out and take advantage of some of this stuff.
I would like to announce the, we're having a District 5 meeting tonight, and encourage everybody in District 5 to please come out and join us and be a very informative meeting. We're going to meet at Convention Hall at the Arthur Green Room at 5:30. Especially the Diskew community, we're emphasizing some stuff in that community, the historical part of our city, and certainly South Gadsden. We just encourage everybody to come on out and join us tonight, and we'll have some real fine discussions about what's going on in our neighborhood. So 5:30, Arthur Green Room. Thank you.
Robert?
Just wanted to make an announcement. Kay talked about First Friday. This is also First Saturday coming up on Tuscaloosa Avenue. All vendors are welcome, whether you've got barbecue, whatever. If you want to sell your jewelry, you want to sell whatever, you're welcome to come out to First Saturday on Tuscaloosa Avenue in the Carver Square. I think everything kicks off at about 1:00. Election, well, I guess you can bring your pass house if you want to. Just make sure you have your crew to be sure to come back and clean up when it's over with. But anyway, this First Saturday will be on Tuscaloosa Avenue, and I think everything kicks off at 1:00.
Avery?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll have anything today.
Oh, me, me, me.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I do have a couple of things. Thank all of you, you know, our loyal Tuesday morning attendees that are here today. We want to let you know that we appreciate your interest, you know, in what's going on in City Hall, and we thank you for coming out. Pretty much every Tuesday morning, we see those faces that are here, so thank you all for coming, we appreciate you. Parks and Recreation Committee will have a meeting on Tuesday morning, next Tuesday at 9:00. We will be going over a multitude of items that are concerned with our city and Parks and Recreation, so please, if you're interested in what Kerry will be presenting to us, in addition to what he has done today, then come on out next Tuesday morning at 9:00. You're all invited. And then, of course, don't forget Litchfield Middle School. We are in support of everything that happens at Litchfield Middle School, and we hope that the community continues to come on out and support Litchfield Middle School in its endeavors to move forward with that institution, move, continue to move forward. And of course, don't forget Boys and Girls Club in East Gadsden, they have a new charter there, and they're new, and a lot of good things are happening there, so make sure that you keep these community situations foremost in your mind. Thank you.
Mayor?
I got Billy's other list here, so he couldn't continue.
He snatched my list.
I just want to say, you know, there is a lot of things, people say there's not much happening, and it is not very expensive, and a lot of times, it's free. So, you know, when you hear people say that, they need to get on the Facebook webpage, DGI, Parks and Rec, it's amazing at all the stuff that they do. And this bass tournament this next weekend is really a big deal, and some people say, you know, why do you have all these? Well, you get 200 boats, that's 400 people fishing. They come in early to try to find the fish and practice, especially with the $10,000 prize, and they eat, they stay in motels, they're lodging tax, you know, they go buy things, so it's a big deal, and it certainly helps our revenue base. But anyway, I appreciate all the departments and everybody working with us, the council. We've got a lot of things going in the right direction, we want to keep it that way. That's all. Thanks.
I have a youth and government two weeks from today. Want to make sure that we remain, youth and government two weeks from today.
Make a motion with adjourned?
Let's make it adjourned.